Good afternoon and welcome to the October 5th, 2010 joint meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority. May we have roll call for the council, please?
Council members Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here.
And may we have the roll call for the agency, please?
Agency members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Friedman.
Vice Chair Draymond.
Here.
Roll call for the Housing Authority.
Authority members Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Mincy.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Frazian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Chair Quintero.
Here. May we have your report, please?
Agenda for the October 5th, 2010 joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, and the Glendale Housing Authority was postponed on Thursday, September 30th, 2010 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And the one I'm...
Item before you is the public hearing Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding proposed Habitat for Humanity five-unit affordable homeownership project to be located at 624 Geneva Street. At 1A is council resolution making findings under the California redevelopment law approving the sale of certain real property to San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity and approving a disposition and development agreement. 1B is agency resolution making findings under California redevelopment law approving the sale of certain real property for San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity and making certain findings with respect to the disposition and development agreement. C is authority resolution approving a disposition and development agreement San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity in support of a for-sale affordable housing development.
Thank you. Mr. Starbird.
Yes, I go to Mike Fortney, Housing Project Manager, for the staff report.
And the public hearing is open. Mr. Fortney.
Good afternoon, Housing Authority Board Members. I'm Mike Fortney, your Housing Project Manager, here to present the Geneva Habitat DDA. Just to give you some background, the land was acquired on June 1st of 2006 for a purchase price of $2.5 million. We acquired the land partly because there was thought of extending the frontage road just immediately south of 134 Freeway. There was a 15-unit condo complex that was entitled for that site, so when we acquired the land for that amount, it included those entitlements. There was two houses that were located on the property. It was 624 Geneva and 630 Geneva. Both houses were really uninhabitable, very, very poor condition. Since then, we have had the houses torn down and the property is now vacant. In May of 2009, we entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with Habitat to develop five units on the site. April of last year, we, or I apologize, April of this year, we extended that E&amp;A, so it is effective through December 31st of this year, again to develop five units for the site. Another thing that staff did, aside from having the two uninhabitable houses taken down, we did a lot-line adjustment on the property. So there were three parcels. There's a very small remnant parcel just immediately south of the 134 Freeway, and then 630 Geneva, then 624 Geneva. What we did was we combined two of the parcels and then moved the line on the third one. So now what we're left with is two parcels, 624 Geneva, which will be the site for the Habitat five-unit development. The other parcel, 630 Geneva, which is 42 feet wide, will be used in the short term for a community garden, and if the decision is made at some point in the future to extend the frontage road, the road which followed that 42 feet that's going to be used as a community garden. And if you recall the last E&amp;A, when you agreed to extend the E&amp;A to December this year, Habitat, you allowed Habitat to use that 42 feet that's going to be the community garden for construction of 624 Geneva.
Staging.
For staging, exactly. And in exchange for that, they have offered to, you know, pull their volunteer resources together to help with the development of the community garden once the five units are constructed. So, a little bit about the units. They're very similar to the units that you've seen before, like in Kenwood. They're townhouse style, two-story, three-bed, one-and-a-half-bath units. Unlike Kenwood, though, these will have an on-grade garage. It won't be a sub or semi-sub parking. So each unit will get its own garage at grade. The units range in size from 1,165 square feet up to 1,355 square feet, and they all have all of the outdoor space that's required by code. To talk a little bit about the Housing Authority's investment in this deal, we are, like we've done before, we are really just contributing land. We acquired land at 2.5 million, and then raising the houses, doing a lot-line adjustment, we've incurred about $64,000 in addition to that. So our contribution to the project would be $2,564,000, which is what we've put into the land in pre-development. So the total development is estimated to be at $3.7 million. So that includes the 2.564 that we're contributing to land. If you back out the land, soft costs are estimated at about $258,000 for the project, and hard costs are just over $900,000 a unit. So for a total of construction costs of $1.151 million. And in the way, on permanent financing, we're expecting four mortgages, although there's no guarantee of the third or fourth at this point. Habitat's applying for them. But at this point, the first mortgage would be Habitat, and we're estimating that at $173,368. And I want to stress "estimated" because these numbers, we won't know the exact number until the deal's actually done and the units are sold. The second mortgage would be the Housing Authority mortgage, and we're estimating that at $145,000 per unit. And then there's a third one, Cal Home, that would be $40,000 a unit. And then finally, the AHP program, the WISH program, $15,000 per unit. And then the buyers would put down $2,000 of their own money. So that's a little bit about the permanent financing on the project. And let's talk a little bit about the marketing. Your report, the hearing was going to be last week, so the report's a little off as far as the dates, but what we're saying is that marketing will basically begin today if the DDA is approved, and it'll run through November 18th with applications being due by December 3rd of this year. They are expecting, oh, before I get off marketing, we're going to market, we recommended marketing in English, Armenian, Spanish, but also Korean, probably going to pronounce this wrong, Tagalog?
Tagalog.
Yeah, apologize for that.
Tagalog.
To the Philippine community as well, so. So it'll be marketed in five different languages, the project. And getting off of marketing, getting into the construction schedule, what we are expecting is no later than December 31st of this year, we would convey land to Habitat for them to begin construction, although they may not start construction until March of 2011. But conveying the land, they'll be able to do some grading, things of that sort, and actually having ownership of the land will help with their application for the two mortgages that I talked about, the two programs, Cal Home and AHP. Later this month, when the Habitat Board meets, they are going to commit the total amount of funds necessary, the $1.151 million, they're going to commit it to the Geneva project, so that'll be there. Anytime after that commitment is made by Habitat Board, we can convey the land. So we don't expect it to be any later than December 31st, but it could be as early as And just to kind of summarize, the construction is required to start within six months of the DDA. We really expect it to probably start in March, although it could start as early as January, and it's expected to go up to 15 months, although I don't think it's going to last that long. Habitat agrees it'd probably be a year or maybe a little bit less, but five units. And then just to summarize our participation, financial participation in the project, it consists of basically the land at $2,500,000 plus the additional $64,000, which we've incurred on pre-development costs. And it's really my presentation, although I did prepare a PowerPoint with some slides to show you the property when we acquired it, and then afterwards, if there was any confusion as far as the lot-line adjustment is concerned, happy to show you those if you want.
Does anyone want to see the PowerPoint? I think the staff report pretty much lays it out, so thank you. Let me go to Mr. Mincy.
We, there was an interesting article in the paper, in the LA Times this week, about cities needing to not spend money on low-income housing, and I was thinking about how proud I am, which should all be with Glendale and the different projects. As far as Habitat is concerned, we have already completed six projects. This is the seventh. Every one of them have added to the neighborhood, have, as I understand, all of the projects still have the same owners that went in there to start with, and it's such, we have such a good relationship with Habitat, and I'm really looking forward to this project also.
Thank you. I have a question. This is a question that I raised several meetings ago. Total cost of this project is 3.7 million. That doesn't place a value on all the volunteer hours that the Habitat organization puts into constructing. For five units, that's about $750,000 per unit. Why don't we go and buy existing units or buy single-family homes for 500,000, 600,000 and allocate, you know, some money for rehab? I see how the model of donating the land and building works in a market that is on the upside and with property and completed structures increasing. But with the market where we're at today, where, I mean, heck, they're selling condos at the Americana for 500,000. I'm having a hard time justifying a total cost per unit of $750,000 to provide affordable housing. Can someone address that for me?
I'd like to. On this particular project, it really, the number just seems just outrageous, but it really is the land, the 2.5 million. When you take out the land, the total construction cost, soft cost, hard cost combined, is $230,000 a unit. So in this particular case, it really is the land. But if I could just, the thing that you mentioned earlier about why not just acquire existing, we have been working on that, and I believe we're going to come back next month with a fairly comprehensive report. I think you're going to be happy with what we've done. It's been really, it's been a lot of fun, actually, to really look throughout the city and crunch the numbers and try to study and see, you know, make a real fair assessment. Is it better to continue down the path of constructing new, or are we missing an opportunity to acquire properties that are recently built or existing and make those so?
Let me add, Mr. Mayor.
We bought the land at the top of the market, so we are looking at inflated prices based
on today's values. And two, you recall, the property was fully entitled for 15 units. We are significantly reducing the density that's going on the property. And in that little neighborhood, frankly, this development will be much more in line with what currently exists in the neighborhood, so to a large extent, you're also having to pay additional because you actually acquired what was an entitled 15-unit development. So you paid the value that you'd associate with that. We're putting five units on it, so it ends up being a bit of an aberration on what you would normally expect if you were going out. And in this market, buying land for this purpose, but these two homes had already been purchased, we don't know what they were purchased for, but the developer had already acquired entitlements for 15-unit development. So it's a bit of a unique circumstance, and we're paying for those components, frankly, as opposed to going out and either buying a unit and rehabbing it, or buying vacant land for the purpose of putting five units on it. If this land had been entitled for five units, its value would have been far less.
Mr. Mayor? So we're down zoning?
Yes, we are actually reducing by two-thirds the amount of density that was otherwise approved for this site.
Mr. Weaver?
Kind of point I want to make, there were two units on there, and we're going to put in six.
Five.
Five, excuse me. So we are increasing housing for family, not the max. So if you go out and buy a single-family somewhere, it's probably a lot where you could break it up into two or three housing units every time. I don't know how many single-family homes you can find that for one family, there's a chance to provide two or three. In this case, five. So, and new housing, too.
And again, I think it's important to keep in mind, this is a bit of an aberration. We were caught with a high land value at the time that we acquired it and a site that already had 15 units approved for it. And I remember when we did the land valuation, essentially they looked at the residual value, what was the land worth for a 15-unit development? So that also tended to make the price of the land higher than it would have otherwise been had we gone out and found two little bungalow sites and purchased them and tore them down. So that's why this whole project started from a basis that was going to be putting more pressure on the land price.
And we bought this, if I'm not mistaken, to maintain a right-of-way along Sanchez. So we didn't buy it with housing in mind. We said there might be some value for housing, but it's...
What caused it?
...bit-of-way value.
Yes, as Mike mentioned, what caused us to look at this was the potential of a 15-unit development went on here, the day that maybe there'd be a circumstance where we could assemble some other pieces and maybe begin to make an east-west frontage road along Sanchez. It was just going to make it that much more difficult. Not that we have any plans in place to go acquire property and do that, but to the extent that there were opportunity sites available, and this could have been one of them, we want to take advantage of it. With that, we said, "Well, but if we acquired it, we don't want to just hold it as a vacant piece. What can it be used for?" And that's when affordable housing with Habitat came up.
Okay. Laura?
I believe we're all happy having the Habitat back to our community with us, but I have a question. Since all the units are three-bedroom and one-and-a-half-bath, why there is a difference, I mean, the size difference, and since the sale prices for all units are the same?
The last question, are all the sales prices the same?
Yes.
They will be. The total of all four mortgages will be the same, and then the first mortgage, which is the only mortgage that each of the homeowners will pay, that will be the same. And then I think the other question, I may be mistaken, but you're asking if the size of the units...
Yes, size difference.
Yeah, okay. There's a slight difference in the size of each of the five units, only because of the way, because of the site, you know, the restrictions on the site, so there's some deviation. The smallest one is 1,165 square feet, the largest, I believe, is 1,355 square feet. So there is some difference. I believe the smaller unit, though, does have a larger outdoor space that kind of makes up for that. But these units are very comparable in size to the Kenwood.
Thank you.
Mr. Draymond?
Well, let me start by saying, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure the folks at Caruso Affiliated are making notes right now about the suggestion of...
Buying their units?
About converting their condos to affordable housing. I know you're kidding. But I also wanted to bring up an issue, since my colleagues have covered the beneficial aspects to this, also I'd like to add the aspect of the community garden, and that this is, I think, a first for us with regard to affordable housing, that combines a community garden into the project. And this actually, if my colleagues recall, this was actually going to be community garden number one, and ended up being community garden number three, which just worked out that way. But it's still a terrific concept, and I think it's going to be a great benefit to the residents there, and to the extent that we could consider that model as we go forward through the years, particularly in South Glendale, where we don't have community gardens right now. That would be a good model to find. Very happy to hear that. Perhaps we can grow a money tree and cover the, some of the costs on the, per-unit costs on the construction. No, I support this. I know the site very well, and I think this is going to be a terrific asset to the city. I really do. And the other Habitat projects in the region, and the one in Glendale, the one on Kenwood, I think is also a terrific project, so it's time we get rolling on this.
Mr. Quintero?
I'm also very happy we're moving forward. I like the design. It's going to really fit into the neighborhoods and the garden next to it. I'm sure some of the residents are going to be interested in having their little plot, and of course, the neighbors and the surrounding properties, but it's an excellent project, and as usual, we don't have to worry about Habitat for Humanity. They get everything done on time and under budget, so looking forward to breaking ground.
Thank you. I have a speaker card from Mr. Milano.
If I could before, I apologize to two things. I forgot to mention that Habitat is committed to making this an equivalent of a Greenpoint rated project. They will exceed Title 24 by 15 percent. The other thing that I failed to mention, are there are three members in the audience here that are representing Habitat that are here to answer any questions. I apologize for that. Thank you.
And hello, Habitat. Mr. Milano.
Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council, members of the Housing Authority and city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. You know, Habitat for Humanity is probably one of the most commendable organizations around, in trying to alleviate a very significant problem that we have, you know, in California and throughout the United States, especially dense cities where land is expensive and construction costs eventually creep up, and finally, the selling price of many of these homes and apartment units and so forth, especially for Glendale, way above the average. But I think that individuals who donate money to Habitat and taxpayers in general want to make sure that the money that we provide and the policies that the government takes on maximize, to the greatest extent possible, the goal and the mission of what hot money is for and for all of these other purposes. I think that we should look at really maximizing that particular city investment in that land, and ensure that we are looking at all these units in something where the costs are going to be such that we could extend the number of units to more people. You know, I look at this, and Mr. Najarian, you're right on point. It's a significantly incredible cost. When you look at the fact that the city is donating that land that could eventually be used for maybe a 15-unit condo, that area is full of fairly high rises and other apartment units, and perhaps another location might be the most suitable for it. Another location where you can actually extend the number of housing units to benefit more people, instead of having such a few number of units for such tremendously high cost. I would like to know, for example, you know, if we can get reports for all of these low-income and affordable housing, or we can get a comparison on the cost per square foot. How much are we paying per square foot for, let's say, City Lights as a project? How much are we paying for a square foot overall for this project? And to think whether we're really maximizing tax dollars and contributions to extend it to the maximum number of people possible. To some extent, I'm a housing provider, and I know that my units, if they were to sell today, they'll probably be, I don't know, 250 at the most, per unit, fully-built land and, you know, subterranean garage and all. So this doesn't make sense to me. I mean, the goals are lofty, you know, they're definitely worthwhile, but you've got to look at the costs. And I think, Mr. Najarian, you're right on point. I think you should review maybe another alternative, other land that is less expensive, and maybe maximize whatever money can be obtained from this one to basically help out Habitat in another way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starbird. At the time you'd like some responses, I'd like to comment on it.
I think we've all had a chance to state our comments, and I'll let you have the...
Well, I'll just respond in this way. The goals of housing, at least the way we've carried it out in Glendale, are multifaceted. The first priority, of course, is to provide affordable units to families who need housing. But there are other objectives as well. Neighborhood revitalization, which you've seen carried out in numerous projects. In this case, the opportunity in a neighborhood that is not high-rises, there is multifamily, there are also many little single-family homes in this neighborhood. I probably drive this street three times a day, I mean, three times a week. It's a beautiful little neighborhood, and there are some multifamily developments. There are many single-family developments both north and south of the Geneva Bridge. Frankly, a 15-unit development would have fit in with the multifamily, but it would also have been way out of character with many of the other single-family developments that are on that property, old Southern California bungalows that exist. I think your goals with this project, like many of our projects, are several-fold. One is to achieve affordable housing. The other is to look for ways to improve neighborhoods as you go about doing that. And we've noted the reasons why the costs associated with these projects, taken out of context, are higher than you otherwise be supportive of. But there are explanations for that, and there are reasonable explanations. The other objective in the Habitat projects is you work with Habitat, Mr. Mayor, and you noted that in particular. Habitat projects can tend to be more expensive, because Habitat does their work both in building neighborhoods as well as building housing in neighborhoods, and working with residents and the equity contributions that they make. It's really all about building neighborhoods and building people, and not just getting the maximum return on your dollar and putting as many units as you possibly can on a parcel. It's never been Glendale's philosophy to go for density, but really to go for meeting multiple objectives when you do a housing project.
Mr. Quintero?
This is the right size and the right project for this parcel of land. The last thing we want to do is overbuild this property. As a matter of fact, R.D. White is right around the corner, and I know they're pretty well, they've been overloaded with students for many years, so I don't have any interest in overbuilding on this parcel. Quite the opposite, we want to try and reduce some of the density in these neighborhoods.
Mr. Weaver?
Just a general comment to Mr. Mincy's. That article on housing is another nice hit piece by the Times, didn't talk about cities like Glendale that are doing the right thing. Out of work, just talk on the negative. Gives every city a bad name by not at least being fair to say cities like Glendale are doing it. Why do that? Doesn't sell newspapers. After bail, everything is fair game. Redevelopment, housing, you name it. But this is great. Let's get it on.
Prepare to move the item for the council. My only comment is that I'm, and it's no reflection on Habitat, but the economics of these, of this project, and it's not Habitat's side of it, it's our side of it, really make it difficult for me to go forward. I will grudgingly accept the fact that there are unusual circumstances, but I suspect that in any sort of project, we can cite unusual circumstances. And I want to see that report from Housing, because I don't think it should be business as usual with our regular manner and policy of buying land, building a structure, and giving it to those affordable. I really want to get into the analysis and the options and the alternatives to building from scratch, because I do think, you know, all the other issues of building a neighborhood aside, I do think one of our obligations is to provide as much housing as we can to the community. And that's something that I will be waiting for, and will hope that we have a very thorough discussion of that and keep our minds open as we look at alternatives to providing public housing. Mr. Draymond?
I would add to that, that I, it's now three years and some months later, and I still have not gotten an adequate, at least for me, adequate explanation of why we are not looking at and why we are not pushing very strongly, pushing our representatives at state level, to do what has been done in New Jersey, Delaware, New York City, Maryland, Oregon, Washington State, Arizona, New Mexico, and other states that have developed an alternative rehabilitation code that allows for properties that might otherwise just continue to deteriorate or have deteriorated, properties that are, in another economy, would just be torn down and rebuilt, to provide an alternative rehabilitation code that allows them to be deemed safe buildings for inspection, but allows them to be rehabilitated in much the same way we do with historic properties, where we have understate guidelines an alternative building code, so that the costs for rehabilitation are cut, in most cases, by 30 percent, which allows those properties to be affordably remarketed, and we save the raw materials that are necessary to build new structures, and it also allows development without increasing the density. In other words, it allows rehabilitation and... In other words, it allows rehabilitation and repopulation of these buildings without increasing the density. So anyway, just wanted to add to that.
I'll take a, if someone's ready to make a motion for council resolution, I'll close the public hearing.
I'll move 1A.
A second. Okay, roll call for council, please.
Council members, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman? Quintero? Yes. Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
And do we have a?
I'll move 1B.
Second.
Okay, can we have the roll call for the agency, please?
Agency members, Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Sheriff Friedman?
Vice Sheriff Drayman?
Yes.
Need a motion for the authority?
I'll move 1C.
Second.
Roll call.
Boarding members, Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Mincy?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Sheriff Quintero?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn for the council?
No, moot.
Is there a second?
Second.
Council's adjourned.
Move to adjourn for the agency?
Second. Agency is adjourned.
Move to adjourn for the Housing Authority?
Second.
Housing Authority is adjourned.